Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, open meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a public hearing meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, February 27, 2025, at 5:35 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at the Austin ISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through spectrum, missed down broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. We are going to have a public hearing about our district annual report. Next is an opportunity for the public to share comments about this report with the Board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly pertaining to the 2023-24 Texas Academic Performance Report, also called the TAPER. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting called a dedicated Austin ISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks, but tonight we do not have anyone who signed up to speak in person, and we have no recorded remarks, so this concludes public testimony. Next, we have a presentation on the district annual report. Mr. Segura, can you please introduce the item?
Good evening, President Boswell and members of the Board. I'd like to invite Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer, Government Relations and Board Services, to present the 2023-24 Annual Report.
All right. Good evening, President Boswell, Superintendent Segura, and Board of Trustees. This evening, we are pleased to present to you the district's annual report for school year 2023-2024. So state statute actually requires that each district's Board of Trustees hold a public hearing to review the annual report within 90 calendar days of receiving it, of receiving the Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER, from the Texas Education Agency. The TAPER report is a summative report for each campus and district in the state. While the TAPER reports for school year 2324 were released this past December, it's important to note that most of the data in TAPER has been publicly available for several months. These performance results have been used in the completion of the district's scorecard and have been provided, and have provided the foundation for campus and district improvement planning, board reporting, and performance monitoring over the past eight months. So this overall will provide a summary of the components of the annual report and a link to the items that make up the complete report. So if you're viewing the PDF online, those links will be hyperlinked. AISD's annual report for school year 2324 is posted on the district website. The report itself is over 2,000 pages. However, if anyone would like to come see a paper copy of it, we can make that available for here at our central office. So this presentation will really provide an overview of that district-wide report. So there are six components that make up our annual report. These are our accreditation status, our overall TAPER for both the district and every campus, the district's PMS financial report, progress on our campus performance objectives, a report on violent and criminal incidences, and our report on post-secondary readiness. We'll go through each one of these. I'll go kind of quick, but we can go back to a slide or pause for questions, whatever works best for the trustees. So starting with our accreditation status. AISD is currently accredited, and our Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, or our first rating, which is our financial accreditation, has been assigned the district's highest rating for a district, which is an A, a superior achievement. For the second consecutive year, A through F state rankings for Texas schools and districts have been withheld due to litigation. As of today, we do not have official state ratings for the school year 2223 or 2324. And as a reminder, 2020, 21, and 1920 were also a not rated. So for many of our schools, we may be going on year five without having a complete rating. Our special education determination status for school year 2324 is currently Needs Assistance, something that we cover a lot in our approved order, and when we report out on approved order, as that is related to some of the child find and other RDA issues dealing with special education.
Dr. Reach, Needs Assistance is in a scale of what? Where does that fall?
I'm going to ask my colleague Carolyn Hansen if she's...
There's four levels.
Do you want to come? Actually, it's on this slide.
It's on this slide.
Yeah. So on the right side? Please go ahead.
There's four levels. We're at the... Four levels, and we're at the second from the worst level. So there's one, two, three, and four. Meets requirements, needs assistance, needs intervention, or needs substantial intervention.
All right. So each district in the state is assigned one of those four special education determination levels. The district was assigned our Needs Assistance for the 2324. Just as a reminder, this is looking at our results-driven accountability. And so we've discussed this previously, but ours is currently around SPP 9, which is disproportionate representation in special education, SPP 10, which is disproportionate representation in our disability category, SPP 11, our timely initial child find, and SPP 12, our early childhood transition. All right. Next one is our Texas Academic Performance Report. So the following slides contain some of the highlights from our TAPER. We'll go through these somewhat quickly so we can provide a sample of the extensive information that's available in all of these reports. Again, this is available for the district, which is what we will go over. It's also available for every single campus in the district. STAR is the state's testing program for students in grades three through 12, and is based on state curriculum standards in reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. STAR tests are designed to measure what students are learning in each grade and whether or not they are ready for the next grade. Much of the TAPER report is related to performance on STAR, but the TAPER also includes student and staff demographic, enrollment, attendance, graduation rates, indicators of post-secondary readiness, and post-secondary outcomes. Financial reports are also available on the online PMS financial reports, but other than a few exceptions are not necessarily part of the TAPER report. So first, we want to share a little on our attendance rate. Some of the indicators in TAPER are what we would call a lagging indicator. That means because of the timing issues in the collection of the data and the release of the TAPER report, the data are not for the most recently passed school year, but rather for the year before. For example, our 2324 TAPER report includes attendance rates for school years 21, 22, and 22, 23. The overall attendance rate for 22, 23 was 90.9%, which was 0.3% higher than the previous year. I do want to mention on the footnote here that we did highlight a high for AISD in 1920. However, one thing to remember for that 1920 year is that the state did implement hold harmless rules for attendance due to COVID. And so there were special rules during the end of the year, which did lead to very good attendance for all the programs because of the hold harmless provisions and not having to count some of the days or some of the times when students may not have been in attendance because of COVID. Our next item is our four-year state longitudinal graduation rates. These are also a lagging indicator. Our rate for the class of 2023 was 93.1%, which is 2.8 percentage points higher than the state rate, but was slightly lower, 2.5% lower than our class the year previous, which was the class of 22. Our next is our CCMR, Percentage of Students Meeting CCMR. Our rates increased for every, and on this one, instead of by years, we're actually showing you two years for every student group. And I apologize. So our rates did increase for every student group for 22, 23. We do not have the state rate on this slide, but we do know that our CCMR rate is six points above the state rate, which is 76.3%. So we want to highlight that as well. Now we'll look at some demographic information. Our report also includes the district's enrollment and racial and ethnic profile using the fall snapshot, which would have been from October of 2023. So on that snapshot day, we had 72,830 students, and then the pie chart will show you the race and ethnicity broken down for those 72,830 students. Also included is our enrollment by program. So on the left-hand side, you can see economically disadvantaged, just over 50%, which is where we were at for the year, right around there for the year prior as well. And then, of course, the inverse of that. We also report on emergent bilingual students, our disciplinary replacements at risk, students with dyslexia, students experiencing homelessness, and then enrollment by programs for bilingual ESL, gifted and talented, and special education. Next slide is looking at our teacher and student race and ethnicity profiles. We put these side by side so you can also see how the breakdown of our staff compare with the breakdown of our students. And this one is just teachers, correct? Yeah. So what we're seeing here is just our teacher profile broken down by both groups. And then furthermore, on teachers, we also have years of experience. And so the same data, but just shown in two different ways. Over half of AISD's teachers have six or more years of experience, and that's actually 56.2% of them have six or more. And actually, 2.7% of them have over 30 years of experience. And just to confirm, this is total education experience, not just with AISD. Right. So total education experience. All right. Moving on from TAPER, we'll look at our PMS financial report. The financial data reported through the Public Education Information Management System, or PMS, gives a comprehensive report of the district's financial status. You can also, by clicking that link, not only can you find that report, you'll also find information on district's recapture. So this is a snapshot of that report. Just two things that I would call out is down at the bottom, you can actually see our total funding that includes recapture. So that $1.68 billion includes recapture. You can also see the per-student cost, but then broken out on the categories up high, you can see just the operating expenditures, and then the recapture underneath that, and then total other uses underneath that as well, along with the per-student for both the general fund and for the all fund. And then as a comparison, we provided the state data as well. While comparing our total dollars to them, may not make a lot of sense looking at those percentages, you can kind of see how we compare to the state with how our budget is broken up by the percentages. Next item is our campus performance objectives. These are based on the district's strategic plan, which you can find through the link that we've provided here. So looking at our performance goals, one through three, although our goals are aligned to the performance of all students, our monitoring report includes performance of all student groups, but for the purpose of reporting here, we are showing the all-student group. So for our goal one, which is our third-grade reading, we have 47% for third-grade reading who are at meets and above. For goal two, which is third-grade math, we are at 39% at meets and above. And for goal three, which is our CCMR, using our TSI criteria, and at least one of the following, which is the associate's degree enrolling in post-secondary or earning the industry-based certification, we are at 44.5% on that metric. In addition, performance objectives are addressed in our overall district's scorecard. And so the same data that I just shared, but we took a snapshot of that from our scorecard to show how we look at both past data and set out yearly targets five years in a row. Our next item of the report is Violent or Criminal Incident Report. Campus results and more details on the violent or criminal incidences are available through the linked report. Overall, the number of offenses was slightly up for the 2324 school year from the year previous. We went from a total of 1,151 incidences to 1,195 incidences. To give an idea of what that means overall, however, is that would be 1.63% of all students were disciplined, and that's a unique student count on the percentage. So this is going to break down those numbers a little bit further for the past three years. So this is looking at the offense that we need to report on, how many for each one of those offenses, and then adding up to that 1,195. So Texas does require that we publicly report all of these violent and criminal offenses within the district, and you can find our report on that source link. Our next category is post-secondary performance. So for graduates tracked by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, which is the organization in Texas responsible for tracking post-secondary outcomes, the number of students who attended a Texas Institute of Higher Education did increase last year. So I want to mention that real quickly, that Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board keeps track of students in a Texas Institute of Higher Education. We do have other sources that help us better understand other post-secondary enrollment, but the Higher Education Coordinating Board is really focusing on the Texas Institutes of Higher Education. So on the chart up here, again, another lagging indicator, which is why we're looking at actually the class of 2022, so two years previous. The first, or I'm sorry, the first column is the 2021, next column is 2022, and then we've broken it down by enrollment in a four-year or two-year or an independent college or TEA has not updated the higher education profile for our student group data for the district yet, but the data shows the outcomes for the 2020 graduates, which is actually the most recent data we have by student group. And so that's what's on this slide here. Overall, while you do see that the state slightly went up from 1920 to 2021, again, this is still old data, the district slightly went down during the similar time period, and our student groups mostly either stayed the same or decreased during that period. The Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board also tracks performance of these students in the year following graduation. So 60% of AISD's 21, 2022 graduates who enrolled in a Texas four-year public university in the year following high school graduation earned a GPA of three or better. So 60% of our students who went to a Texas university were at a GPA of three or higher. At two-year public universities, 40% maintained a GPA of 3.0 or higher. So that is a overview of our district annual report.
Thank you, Dr. Reach and Ms. Hansen. At trustees, do we have any questions?
How does this time count?
This is a required report.
Neutral.
Neutral. Thank you.
Okay. Is it possible to get a breakdown on slide where you had the teachers' races and ethnicities? Would it be possible to see that also with salaries and years of experience? Or is that...
We could do an average for those bands. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. For those different categories that you have.
Looking at... Oh, it's not up. Will we be able to show the slide again, please?
I think it's 14.
So on 15, on those... Oh, you want to buy the race ethnicity groups.
And I would just be interested in seeing how that, how the race breaks down in terms of salaries.
Sure. It's probably going to be more closely related to years of experience, but I think we could probably do it either way.
Okay. I was just wondering. And then also, I think towards the end, our offenses, does a drug offense count vapes and nicotine products?
So it does not unless we... So I guess two parts to that. Vapes that we, that are nicotine would not be included. Vapes that may include THC or marijuana would be included.
Okay.
If we knew that's what it was.
How do we not know?
Well, we're not... So we have to test the device if we don't know what's in it, and we do not have the testing equipment ourselves.
So trustee Quintana, what happens is if it's not in a package and it's unidentifiable, then there's no way to determine because what the fluid is, I guess, whatever they call it. But many times, it is in a package, and we can track the manufacturer, and we can determine, you know, if it is THC or not. But we don't test because it is, I think last time we checked, it was, I think, over $100 per...
It was cost prohibitive to check what the liquid is.
So then do you just give them a drug offense, or do you give them a nicotine?
If we cannot tell, then we give them the nicotine offense.
Okay. Thank you.
Could it... I just wanted to clarify. So on those offenses, those are as categorized by AIC, not necessarily the AISDPD, or are those being processed through the AISDPD to count as an offense?
So they would always start with, I shouldn't say they would always, they would almost always start with AISD staff before they went to AISD police.
Well, so I mean, for the purpose of this reporting, if it's counted as a drug offense, is that assuming that it has gone through AISDPD, or that's we've determined that it's a drug offense, since we're not testing the vapes?
You mean just for the vapes?
Just for this categorization. So, you know, if there were, you know, 2023, 24, 742...
I guess the best way to answer is that if a student is in possession of drugs, and we are aware that it is an illegal narcotic or other drug, we will inform AISD police on that.
Sorry. Try it one more way. Do they have to have been charged by PD for them to show up on this?
Like, do they have to receive a ticket for it?
Right.
No.
Okay. So that's our categorization.
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then one other one that I would just add for trustee Quintana's question, I would be interested in also seeing for the staffing, if we did the breakdown within the years of staffing by race, so we could see how many 30-year teachers are of the different ethnicities, if that makes sense. I'm curious if the representation is changing over the seniority of our teachers. Thanks.
Any other questions? Trustee C.
Thank you for this. So I wanted to talk about Slide 11, which is the CCMR. Just to clarify, so how do we define college career and military readiness? That's not the outcomes bonus criteria, is it?
This is the state's, right?
Yeah. State CCMR, so it's the, it includes college prep and the TSI indicator.
Okay. So college prep courses plus passing the TSI?
Plus passing the TSI SAT ACT.
Okay. Cool. Got it. Do we know, and I think it's awesome to see the growth that we've had between those two years for every single student group, which is pretty cool. And I just wanted to know if we happen to know how this compares to the state for the subgroups. I believe the source link just says, has information on the state aggregate, but for example, did our economically disadvantaged students perform better than the state's economically disadvantaged students?
Yes. At the time that we prepared this, the state had not released their TAPER, but it's available now, so we can do a slide, do a report for you on that.
Oh, I appreciate that. Yeah. Yeah. And it does not mean anything, I'm just curious to know, like, where we did better than the state, these categories, and where we maybe did worse. Yeah, I think that was my only question for now. Thank you.
So trustee C, and I guess to the other questions, providing them as a board update in a, perhaps the end of next week, appropriate?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. Yeah. Thanks.
Trustee C.
I have a, noticing and then perhaps a question. The turnover rate for teachers is a listed item on the TAPER report, and one of the priorities that Superintendent Segura had when he came in was to stabilize our employment force to help make sure that our, that we weren't losing people left and right. And so this turnover rate for teachers is a really important number there. And I just want to note that it's sitting on that report at 17.7%, which is below the state average, which if I recall, the previous several years, the AISD's turnover rate was always higher than the state average, and yet it's lower that first year. And this report reflects the first year after Superintendent Segura stepped in. And so I just want to note that as far as a positive figure that's in this. And then looking at the previous year TAPER's report, AISD was showing a 31% turnover rate, so a drop from 31% to 17.7% from high above the states to below the states. So I just want to recognize that as something really important as far as mission accomplished with stabilizing that turnover that first year in. I am wondering, you know, I know you all keep track of this data as we go forward. Do you have an estimate? I mean, because of next year's TAPER report that we have to wait nine months for, will tell us what the turnover rate was for last year, which would have, we already have that data as of the fall of this year. Do you have an estimate of what our next turnover rate is going to be?
Brandi Hossack, Chief of Talent Strategy, has that number, and yes, we track it hourly.
Good evening, trustees. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I will say that we are continuing to increase. I apologize for my voice, by the way. I will also say that just for the trustees' knowledge to keep in mind, that turnover rate as calculated by the state really means to move from a teacher position into any position. So if you move out of a teaching position but remain with the district, go into an instructional coaching position, or if you go into an assistant principal position, that actually counts as turnover. And so we also talk about the, a little bit differently internally, so I just wanted to make sure that as good as that number continues to look, it actually is higher than that because we retain people into other positions as well. But I will be happy to respond with the number that we had in September.
And are we looking, are we seeing, is it steady? I mean, are we keeping at that same kind of similar rate? Are we seeing it go, the turnover rate go down? Are we seeing it go up on whatever...
We are seeing retention continue to increase. We are expecting another double-digit impact. It gets harder as you increase, but we are seeing significant shifts and hope to maintain that.
Okay. I appreciate that. And so I would, I'm just wondering, from your perspective, in, you know, looking backwards now, what would you say the reason for that improvement to be, some of the reasons?
I would first say that leadership matters and that the tenor that, with which we lead matters, and the care that we extend to our employees matters, and the recognition that we extend our employees matters. I would also say that previous compensation packages that our board has approved, that is a significant reason for being able to hold on to our employees who, again, they can choose where they want to work in this, in this, you know, time period, especially in public education. And for us to be able to hold on to them in Austin ISD is very important to us, but we have to remain competitive, and our board's been able to do that. But I think a continuous focus on our values as a district is also something that's incredibly important, and it's something that people tell us when we are out recruiting, is that they're attracted to our district for what we stand for. So I think between those things, it's been an incredible help for us over the last couple of years.
Awesome. Thank you. So as we move into this very difficult budget conversation that will continue tonight, and some of the investments that we make in our values are going to be challenged. Some of the things that people appreciate that we invest in, we may not be able to invest in them as much, and that, you know, already hearing from, you know, based on rumors and things that, and anticipated, like, not rumors... things that, and anticipated, like, not rumors, as, based on suggestions that have been made of things that might be cut with the budget, there are, you know, there's always kind of the voices of, well, I'm, I'm leaving if that happens, or I'm not going to stay in it. Do you anticipate that some of, I mean, by those things that you mentioned, leadership, treating people respectfully, honoring our values, do you anticipate that we'll be able to continue to project that among, as we face the balance, the, the budget challenges?
Thank you for the warm-up questions, Dr. Kaufman, I appreciate it.
I mean, I guess I really, I don't mean anything, I really just mean, like, I want, I, I just want to, do we have a strategy in terms of amplifying what's great about AIS and why people love staying here, to make sure we combat some of the pieces that are going to feel really negative to people because of the cuts? Do we have a strategy for how to maintain that level of commitment to our district in that sense of being appreciated and wanting to be here in the midst of things that are going to make it feel in some ways, wow, this is not the district that I used to work in, because of the investments that we're not able to make?
Yes, sir, that is, that is certainly what we want to be able to convey, and, and what we'll continue to push is how much we value our, our employees. Obviously, the, the landscape for which we have to operate is ever-changing, and it's only getting more difficult. And I've said this before, that your employees can withstand change and can withstand increased demands if and only if the leadership that they work for cares about them and makes that known, and lets them, and is incredibly transparent. If, if, if our employees feel like they are being done to versus being brought along, that will feel very different. And so my encouragement to the board and to our administration, to every leader on campus, is to be as transparent and forthcoming with where we are at all times, because we are in this together, and it, it is not going to always feel good, but leading with transparency is the most, most important part.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you for that, and I really appreciate you pointing out that turnover rate, and really excited to see continued improvement in that. It's profoundly important for our kids, and, and I appreciate you pulling that out, flagging it, thank you. Any more questions?
I don't have a question, however, viewers are saying that it's a little hard to hear us.
Oh, thank you.
And so that if we could maybe speak directly into the mic, or they're working on the system or whatever, until we can figure that out, so that they can hear us.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I have just two questions. One is on slide ten, which shows our graduation rate decreasing across the board, and, and wonder if we have a clear understanding of why?
I'm not sure that I can say that we have a, a super clear explanation on why they may have decreased. I would say that for many years prior to this, we have been increasing. Just ten years ago, some of these student groups were ten percent lower than what they're all, they are right now. And so we have had many years of increases. Dr. Wilson, do you have anything else to add?
No. Good evening. We've been working, yes, not no, we've been working strategically with principals around this area, and just asking for their honest, transparent feedback on the differences between the years when we had increase in rates, the years now we've decreased. And one of the things they said is strategic staffing has really helped out in previous years, specifically speaking, a position that's solely dedicated to support this area, which is through, we had graduation coaches in the past, they supported this area with helping to track the levers, dropouts, helping for different coding, and then helping to provide support in that area. So now we still have those supports at campuses, it just lies within a position, like an assistant principal or someone else that may have other things on the caseload. We do track, and we have ECST meetings that we meet with for, like, our targeted students and students of support. We found that some schools, like Northeast Early College High School, they're able to still fund a, a graduation coach, you know, a project specialist that is dedicated to the roles that a graduation coach has previously had through their Title I funding, but we will see, and we had the principal, Principal Neal present at the last principals meeting, but we also will see next year that we will have a decrease in title funding as well across campuses. So one of the things is just allocations that support strategic staffing to be able to fund full-time positions to help build in that area. To supplement, we were using the parent support specialists, we're also using our ECST, ECST teams in very strategic ways to be able to help out with that area.
Thank you for that, Dr. Wilson, and it's interesting, I, I think it's always worth asking when we see something that's so consistent across demographic groups, and understanding that those positions were cut for budgetary reasons does help explain that and, and helps frame our conversation about the budget. Yeah, and, and the hard cuts we're going to have to make, so thank you for that, I appreciate that. And then I want to just go to the, the slide twenty-one, our, our HB three, our campus performance objectives, and really just note that for goal one and goal two, our, our reading and our math, we are lower than our beginning targets on both of those, and just ask Dr. Reach if you can help explain why that is. That we started at fifty, you know, we were trying to increase from fifty percent to fifty-nine percent, and now we're at forty-seven percent. We were going to increase from forty-two percent to fifty-five percent, and now we're at thirty-nine percent.
Well, you know, I, I certainly want to say that we all, obviously always want to be going up. However, there were significant changes that occurred to the star in two major ways during this time, from when our goal was set to when these tests were done. First, the actual structure of the test did change. It moved to completely online, it also moved to the, the writing being incorporated into all the different tests, and the open writing being a portion of all of those different exams, which were then scored using, what, what is the term? I want to make sure I use TEA's term. Thank you, an automated scoring engine was used.
Some of us might call that AI.
Yes, some, some may refer to it as artificial intelligence. So that, that's certainly one reason. Then also, how they do the cut scores for accountability is always changing. So forty-seven percent does not mean that you scored seventy out of a hundred questions right, and, you know, because those cuts continually change. And while I think best practice and what the state wants to do is make sure we all know what those cut scores are up front, sometimes we're finding out after the test is done, where those cut scores are at. So by all means, we expect these scores to continue to go up, but there were two major changes that occurred during that period that also had a significant impact.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think it's helpful to just illuminate for people that we're looking at two different measures, really, on this single slide.
Yes, and we are shifting our focus to support that as well, specifically in the areas of the ECR, Extended Constructive Responses. So we just met as a district collaborative committee yesterday with our campus improvement plans, and including changes for next school year, and this is a committee with our CDA team, school leadership, academics, some principals, and a host of other people. One of the things that we're adding for our targeted goals in the academics area is to track the growth and measurement of extended constructive responses and how students are scoring for proficiency-wise, because we know that once we start tracking that, then we'll see that increase when it comes to writing in, across all domains and content areas to support that focus.
Thank you all. And trustees, any other questions? All right, thank you so much for the presentation, the information, and the answers to the questions, really appreciate so much information and, and a really good resource for anyone who wants to go to Board Docs and see. So next, we have another public hearing about our targeted improvement plans, and this, again, will start with an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board, this time about the TEA targeted improvement plans, and members of the public wishing to participate in the public hearing portion of our meeting, called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meetings to sign up to speak in person or audio record their remarks. And once again tonight, we don't have anyone who signed up to speak in person, and we have no recorded remarks. So we will move on to the targeted improvement plan presentation. We have thirty minutes set aside for this. Next is this presentation about the targeted improvement plans. In addition to our public hearing and presentation, the board will vote to accept these plans on consent at tonight's voting meeting. We'll close this meeting and start another meeting, and you'll see this again on our consent agenda. And once again, Mr. Segura, can you please introduce the item?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Boswell, and Board of Trustees. I'd like to invite Jennifer Pace, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, Dr. Angel Wilson, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, Carolyn Hanschen, Executive Director of Accountability and Assessment, and Dylan Finan, Director, Director of Campus and District Accountability, to take us through the twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five targeted improvement plans presentation.
Good evening, President Boswell, Superintendent Segura, and Board of Trustees. Each year, the Texas Education Agency determines the monitoring and intervention activities required, required of schools deemed to be academically in need of improvement under state or federal accountability guidelines. Under twenty twenty-four state accountability, for the second consecutive year, A through F ratings were delayed due to litigation and are still, still being withheld. However, federal accountability labels were released in August twenty, August of twenty twenty-four. The federal label of comprehensive support and improvement, or CSI, is assigned to Title I schools with a closing the gaps score in the bottom five percent of their school type, and to any high school that did not attain a federal six-year rate of sixty-six point seven or better. The label of comprehensive support requires the development of a board-approved targeted improvement plan by February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Once a label of comprehensive support is assigned to a campus, it takes two years for that school to exit that designation. In order to, to exit comprehensive support, a campus must stay out of the bottom five percent of the closing the gaps domain for two consecutive years, and achieve a domain score that's higher than the year in which they were initially identified. The campuses listed in the box on the right, on the left, were identified for comprehensive support and improvement in twenty twenty-three, but in twenty twenty-four were able to achieve the performance needed to earn a label of comprehensive progress. They met the requirements, they're not in the bottom five percent, but because of the two-year designation, these schools can exit when they meet the criteria for two consecutive years. They could do that this year by, by showing the same progress that they made last year. But they're still, still required, even with the progress designation, to do a targeted improvement plan for the school year. The schools on the right are also required to prepare a targeted improvement plan. They were identified for comprehensive support based on their closing the gaps domain score, or as with Rosedale and GPA Navarro, based on their six-year federal graduation rate. It's worth noting that the score used to identify schools for comprehensive support and improvement does not necessarily identify the schools in the state with the lowest performance results. The closing the gaps domain is based on a complicated percentage of points that each school is awarded and acquires based on a gradated point system for a series of several indicators. Points are awarded for achieving a current or a long-term target, or for achieving growth over the prior year. Schools with very low performance can acquire points by doing slightly better than they did last year, but schools that are close to a target and remain at that level or drop by a point or two earn zero points if they're below the target. So that, some of those schools that are right in the middle range are, are getting caught in the system just because it's very complex and, and based on indicators that are, that are kind of not intuitive in some cases. So that we're, the schools that are identified will be develop, developing their targeted improvement plans, and Dylan, Director of Campus and District Accountability, will take us through the requirements of the targeted improvement plans.
Good evening. Oh, we'll get cozy. Good evening. There's six basic requirements this year for targeted improvement plans. It's important to note that this has changed over time. We did not have board-approved targeted improvement plans last year, and TEA did not ask us to develop those plans until the very end of the school year. It was in late April, early May that we actually developed targeted improvement plans and submitted them to the state the year before that. So two years ago, we did have board-approved tips, but they were a totally different structure. So what you're seeing tonight is different than what we have previously presented to you all. There's six main components of plans this year. Campuses have to gate, engage in what's called an ESF diagnostic, and Region thirteen conducts that on each campus, and they spend a full day doing a diagnostic to see how campuses are aligned to that essential schools framework. They need to develop a school improvement statement of strategy, and then they need to evaluate their resources and make sure that those resources that they're spending are aligned to the strategy that they have planned for school improvement. They need to identify their curriculum, and then they need to solicit public feedback, and then modify the plan based on the public feedback that was received, and then we need to present those plans to the board, as we're doing tonight, for approval. Our AISD process and the ISAM template, I attached the template for you in attachment three, so you can see what those templates look like. The development window, we did not receive the template, the final template, until December thirteenth, and then we had to have these plans presented and approved by the board by February twenty-eighth. I say that to say we had a very truncated or condensed timeline to get this done. So once that was released, we met with the Office of School Leadership and developed a plan to support campuses in developing the tips. Between January seventh and the thirty-first, campuses actually went and developed their tip plans. In elementary, they collaborated with their executive directors and their leadership teams to develop the tips and submit them to our office, and then we submitted the plans to TEA through ISAM. The secondary level, we all met at Martin Middle School, and they collaboratively designed their tip plans with support staff from Central Office and the Office of School Leadership, and then, once again, they submitted those plans to us, and we submitted them to TEA through ISAM. The timeline for this year in terms of tips and the main events are, school improvement training and ESF diagnostics were conducted in September and October. TEA met with the superintendent's office on November seventh of twenty twenty-four. There is optional leadership development training through Legion thirteen that are available throughout the school year up until June, and Region thirteen reaches out individually to campuses to schedule those. And then this evening, we are meeting with you to get the tips approved and hopefully approved, and then submit it officially. Next slide. AISD supports and the DCSI role. So even though some of the tips you're looking at may look very brief, there's a lot of work going behind the scenes to improve student achievement and improve overall accountability scores. We have principal supervisors that provide embedded leadership coaching to all of our campus administrators. We have accountability trainings throughout the year, throughout the year, to make sure campuses understand the rules under which they're being rated. We have three formative assessments or progress monitoring events that are associated with mandatory data coaching, so that campuses can develop a strategy for making sure they make progress in these areas, and they have the data that they need in order to make informed decisions and meet their personalized accountability goals. We have targeted campus trainings and presentations, this could be presentations to the CAC, presentations at staff meetings in order to support this process based on what the principal's plan is for achieving their accountability goals, and we customize them on a campus-by-campus basis. And then we have a structured MTSS process that is overall improving student learning experiences across the board, across the district. The district coordinator of school improvement, of which we have two, this person needs to be a senior cabinet-level district leader that has access to the superintendent's office and the ability to make resources available to campuses in need in order to meet their accountability goals. And they need to communicate any challenges to the superintendent and the cabinet on a timely measure so that they can respond to those challenges. All right, next slide. So in summary of the tip, like I had mentioned, you may have noticed that the tips submitted are much shorter than what we have submitted. This decision was made by the Texas Education Agency in order to reduce the paperwork associated with the tips. Their goal was to make sure that people could spend more time working on improving student achievement and less time filling out paperwork, and that's how it was communicated to us, and we appreciate those efforts. Rest assured, campuses are working Rest assured, campuses are working rigorously behind the scenes to improve student achievement and the associated accountability scores through the things, the items I have outlined earlier. The main TIP components are: They have to write one or two sentences to define their school improvement strategy. They need to make sure they're reallocating resources to support that strategy. They have to identify what curriculum they're using at their campus. And then they have to have a description of how stakeholders were engaged in this process, including the dates that they met with the community. And then, lastly, we have to provide the date of this board meeting. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Pace, and she will go over examples of what's being done at some of our campuses.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to share some information about Barrington Elementary. Barrington's Targeted Improvement Plan is focused on instructional leadership development and effective instruction. Principal Sanchez and her leadership team are working on the consistent use of avid routines and structured conversations to increase student engagement. Data-driven instruction is a focus of PLCs, and multi-tiered systems of support are being strengthened through observation and feedback cycles. Principal Sanchez works with the instructional coach to support professional learning communities, observation and feedback cycles, and modeling and co-teaching. Additionally, she's allocating funding for two teacher assistants to provide additional support to students during core instruction, additional small group support, and to support students during independent work time. And after-school tutoring provides students with additional opportunities to master high-leverage TICs. Barrington's master schedule allows teachers to participate in professional learning communities two times per week, and during this time, Principal Sanchez and her ILT support grade-level teams to internalize curriculum, analyze data, plan interventions, practice reteach, and engage in targeted professional development. Additionally, Barrington will benefit from the LASSO Instructional Leadership Grant that will support instructional leadership development and early literacy. It will provide technical assistance, training, and one-on-one coaching for campus leaders to build their own capacity and that of the educators they manage over the next two years.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, good evening. We will now take a deeper dive into the middle schools, which comprise five of the six schools identified for tonight's presentation. These schools include Bedditch, Dobie, Sattler Means, Burnett, and Webb. Of these five schools, you will only notice slides for three schools because we are pleased to announce that two schools, Burnett and Webb, were not required to write TIPS this year, and they are currently not on a TIP. And this is because they exited the Comprehensive Support and Intervention label. You'll hear us refer to CSI throughout tonight's presentation. So Burnett exited the CSI label in the spring of 2003, and Webb exited in the spring of 2024. Before we move into a deeper discussion and look at the three middle schools that are on TIPS, we'll talk about some school improvement strategies that we've noticed and trends and practices at Burnett and Webb that we are currently using this year to leverage supports across all other secondary campuses. Some of the strategies we found that have proven to be effective at Burnett and Webb include directly supporting teachers through instructional strategies for students identified as newcomer and emergent bilingual, prioritizing strategies to improve the discipline disproportionality rates for identified student groups, positively enhancing the campus culture and climate, leveraging parent and community support in very creative ways, and utilizing a distributive leadership model to develop talent through ongoing coaching and feedback with teacher leaders leading the work. Both of these schools also have stability and leadership, with Principal Coyle having 11 years in the Webb community and the last three years as principal. At Burnett Middle School, we have Principal Larry De La Cruz that has been an administrator in the Navarro vertical team for the past 10 years, with his last two years serving as principal at Burnett Middle School. We are leveraging these practices across our secondary schools and not just with the campuses that are identified for TIPS this school year. So now we're going to take a closer look at Bedditch, Dobie, and Sattler Means, YWA. At Bedditch Middle School, Principal Angela Atkinson is currently serving her third year as principal of Bedditch, and also her 12th year as an educator at Bedditch Middle School. She started there as a teacher, so she's well-known and loved within the Bedditch community. Teacher, staff, and community have full confidence in her leadership and due to her investment in the work. Bedditch's Targeted Improvement Plan is centered around enhancing professional development through instructional strategies and training for teachers that strategically support identified student groups, such as Hispanic, African-American, and special education, which all significantly impact Domain 3, which you'll notice will be a focus with all three of the campuses that we are discussing today for middle schools. Title I funding is also allocated to support critical staffing positions. The district funded 1.5 FTE position for instructional coaching, and then Principal Atkinson funded the remaining 0.5 position using title funds. What you'll also notice is that with our band I schools, we were able to centrally support and fund instructional coaching positions due to the need and due to the academic challenges that we see, and then also budgetary constraints as well. Principal Atkinson also leveraged title funds to staff supplemental teacher positions that provide extra support for eighth-grade math through math lab classes in sixth and seventh grade, as evidenced by a need in the data. This has also helped to increase dual-language access to students and created space for science intervention and PLC support in science. Professional learning at Bedditch includes the Avid Summer Institute. As you know, Bedditch is our only middle school that is an Avid National Demo School to fund lead-forward rocking review and small group instruction. Extended planning and PLC planning efforts include summer planning, instructional cabinet retreat, and additional planning during the school year. Our next school is Dobie Middle School. Roxanne Walker is currently completing her second year as principal of Dobie Middle School. Through the use of the effective schools framework, diagnostic, she's been able to identify key areas of support. One of those key areas you'll see projected on this slide. Dobie's TIP focuses on the process. It's important to notice, before we even get into Dobie's Targeted Improvement Plan, that this slide focuses on the TIP or the Targeted Improvement Plan, but we are also, as a district, in the process of writing a turnaround plan. So you'll hear the terminology "tip" and "tap" used respectively as we talk about Dobie Middle School. Dobie was identified by the state as needing a tap because of the campus's failure to exit Comprehensive Support and Improvement for multiple years, and also being re-identified more than once can signal the identification for a turnaround plan. But for the purpose of tonight's presentation, we will focus on the TIP, the Target Improvement Plan. The campus did not meet state performance standards in the following areas of accountability: student achievement, school progress, and closing performance gaps. Dobie's TIP focuses on strategically scheduling students for targeted support, implementing research-based interventions, and providing continuous professional development for teachers and staff. Campus staff engage in ongoing PD centered around differentiated instruction and SEL strategies to create a safe and welcoming learning environment. This includes the restructuring of PLCs, or professional learning communities, with teacher collaboration in helping to analyze student data, student achievement data, and refining instructional approaches. Dobie's student-centered learning approach prioritizes hands-on learning, best instructional strategies for supporting students identified as emergent bilingual, and by building a strong sense of community on the campus. Lastly, we will take a closer look into Bertha Sattler Means, YWA-LA, where Principal Deshaun Robey has served as principal for the past five years. This TIP focuses on improving academic growth for students identified as African-American and Asian. Why these two student groups? It's because Closing the Gaps requires improvement for the two lowest-performing racial/ethnic groups, as determined by comparing performance of these racial/ethnic groups from the prior school year. In alignment with Domain 3 and in direct correlation with Telpass, Sattler Means is also enhancing instructional support and development for students identified as emergent bilingual. Overall, the goal is to ensure that all students are able to achieve progress by making progress personal for each individual student. One of the ways in which the campus is doing this is through the implementation of what they call the Fab Five, a campus-wide focus on five strategies: purposeful teaching, building relationships, small group instruction, cross-curricular writing, and hands-on learning. Additionally, Sattler Means has implemented a 45-minute advisory period program to meet the academic needs of students. This program includes specialized advisory sessions tailored for supporting students identified as emergent bilingual and newcomers, and also helping with language acquisition. Additionally, the campus emphasizes small group instruction within classrooms, focusing on targeted skills such as closely monitoring the progress of the lowest-performing academic groups. Lastly, the campus has implemented an extended advisory period this year, made possible through a reallocation of time in the master's schedule to prioritize student learning, and it further supports instructional interventions and student achievement. And now Carolyn will take us through the next slide, which summarizes our district data.
Yes, in summary, we are -- 34 AISD schools have developed targeted improvement plans due to their label of Comprehensive Support and Improvement, and we're bringing these plans to you tonight for your approval. 50% of the schools are labeled Comprehensive Progress and are not in the bottom 5%, but still writing their taps. If they maintain their current levels of performance, they will exit CSI based on this year's data. Four are CSI re-identified, and 13 are newly identified based on school year 23-24 data. Doctor Wilson mentioned the turnaround plan that is in the works for Dobie Middle School, and that will be developed as part of a TIP addendum. It's also a new structure introduced by TEA this year in this rather compressed year, and it was only based on a reinterpretation of sanctions and interventions that Dobie is doing a plan. Originally, it was three years of failure to exit that resulted in a turnaround plan, and on December 19, we were given a rule that said after two years, they would be required to develop a turnaround plan. So that work is for the whole state. Anybody in this situation is developing that plan, and we will bring the turnaround plan to you for a public hearing this spring. It's likely to be April 24 meeting. And Assistant Superintendent Pace will summarize.
All right. Last school year, we had 15 elementary campuses that had a Comprehensive Support and Improvement label. All but one achieved progress by the spring of 2024, and two campuses exited Comprehensive Support. That was Pecan Springs and Oak Springs. The other 12 campuses all made progress, which shows that Austin ISD has strong systems of support for campuses that are identified as Comprehensive Support and Improvement. For the 24-25 school year, 10 campuses were newly identified as Comprehensive Support and Improvement based on their 23-24 performance. An area of opportunity is to improve prevention strategies so that campuses will not be identified for comprehensive improvement. Our multi-tiered systems of support framework is a critical component of prevention. Austin ISD is committed to the effective implementation and execution of our MTSS framework to promote student success, prevent academic and behavioral challenges, provide early interventions, and identify students who may have disabilities. Our MTSS framework is a collaborative effort involving campus administrators, general and special education teachers, counselors, parent support specialists, interventionists, instructional coaches, and specialists in our academics, special education, and multilingual education departments. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Wilson, for the secondary highlights.
For our secondary summary, last school year, nine secondary campuses were identified as CSI, Comprehensive Support and Improvement. These campuses were Bedditch, Dobie, Paredes, Sattler Means, Webb, Eastside, GPA Navarro, LBJ, and Northeast. Three out of these nine campuses were re-identified: Eastside Early College High School, Navarro GPA, and Dobie Middle School. Webb Middle School exited CSI. We were able to significantly reduce the number of campuses that were newly identified in the 2024-2025 school year. There were three newly identified campuses, which are General Marshall, Martin Middle School, and Rosedale due to a six-year federal graduation rate below 66.7%. It is evident that based on our school improvement efforts, Austin ISD has strong systems to support campuses that have been identified as Comprehensive Support Improvement. And as Ms. Pace stated, an area of opportunity is helping to reduce the number of campuses that are newly identified as CSI. We've embraced a district-wide MTSS model to support solid Tier I instruction and intervention, and this framework helps to encode student success through early intervention, strengthening Tier I core instruction, and then the training and development of teachers and staff, also by supporting preventative measures for students experiencing academic and/or behavioral challenges. At the secondary level, we have also focused our efforts on leveraging instructional support and development to all campuses and not just the campuses identified through state intervention. This work includes daily coaching and support through our executive director team and our academics team, ongoing professional learning for teachers and administrators, weekly calibration walks, and leveled systems of support through a streamlined focus on identified instructional strategies and campus exemplars. This concludes our presentation regarding our district's targeted improvement plans, and we are now ready to transition to a collaborative discussion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all very much for this. I appreciate it. And before we take questions, I want to just note there's a really thorough presentation, answers to questions attached in Board Docs. Trustee Singh had a very good list of questions that said that you will see extra tables. It's a really rich attachment. Just want to flag that for anyone, and I'm sure we'll have some questions about that, but wanted to flag that for anyone who is into this and wants to go deep. Do we have any questions? Trustee Hunter?
I guess I'll just do three little brief areas for brevity. One is just to first express, make an observation and express some gratitude. I'm of the belief, well, one thing that research tells us is the importance of the teacher. Another thing we know about is the importance of the instructional leader. And as a theory of action, there's something to someone being in a community as a teacher than as an AP, than as a principal. And it's just something I've longed to see more and more broadly across our district because so many of our high-performing schools, when you dial in, you see that. So if I go to Navarro and I see Principal Coven, and he's been on the campus as a principal, say, six years, but then you dial in and actually he showed up somewhere around 2001. I don't know when he showed up, but it was like more than 20 years ago, right? If I go to Ridge Top and Principal Kara, and she's been there like a minute, and you know, if you talk to her, she said, "This is where I started my career. This is where I want to..." Like, "I made a commitment decades ago that this is where I'd be," right? So now I go to hear about, say, Burnett, and if I see Principal Larry, I'm like, "Well, didn't I see you at Navarro?" And he is a part of that community, so even if he wasn't particularly on that campus, he's absolutely part of that community. So just an expression of gratitude for whether this was a theory of action that was put into place or whether we've fallen into it. Thank you for that. I believe in it, and I think our communities believe in it. They love to see that teacher, now the AP, now the principal, and it just, it just says wonders for us. So I'm really, I'm kind of noticing that and appreciating it.
Trustee Foster, for the record, nothing just falls into place. There's a lot of conversations and a lot of kind of thoughtfulness that goes into just the approach to leadership. So I just wanted to make sure that anybody following along at home knew that we're very thoughtful about all of this.
Maybe I'm being a little too... I guess my comments were an awareness of your purposefulness and expression of gratitude. I know you didn't just fall into this or luck into this. So I guess thank you for allowing me to, not letting me be obtuse. Thank you for making it clear what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to say thank you for something that I see as purposeful. Good work. Tell me about, and we're calling them the Fab Five schools, so Bedditch, Dobie, et cetera, et cetera. We've got these schools that we have this focus. You mentioned that on Bedditch, you've got two instructional coaches, 1.5 funded this way, 5 funded, 0.5 funded that way. Tell me about the effectiveness or the importance or the value of the instructional Tell me about the effectiveness or the importance or the value of the instructional coach on the campus? How important are they to what goes on? And then what is their distribution across these Fab Five?
So the instructional coaches are vital to the academic success of the campus and just the teacher's level of knowledge and support. As you can imagine, the student mobility rates at these campuses are pretty high. The amount or the number of students identified as receiving special education services, identified as emergent bilingual, identified as maybe not ever having passed a test before when they, you know, come to us in middle school. And then the teacher attrition rate. We've worked very intentionally about helping to improve and you'll notice improvements across these campuses with teacher retention rates, but you know, having an influx of first year teachers at a campus, it can't be solely the responsibility of the admin team or solely the responsibility of a veteran teacher that may be on the grade level or in the department. It has to be shared leadership and instructional coaches have played a very pivotal role in helping to support daily first-year teachers and helping to support them in very strategic ways. When you go to these campuses, you'll hear the teachers singing their praises as well as how the instructional coaches may help to model small group instruction, may help to pull small group. They may also help to do side-by-side coaching, help to lesson plan, be an active participant in POCs, and just a credit to our talent strategy team as well because our instructional coaches receive bi-weekly training, which is something that is really hard to do in a district of our size to dedicate the time, talent, and resources to be able to pour into people bi-weekly, both at the elementary level and the secondary level. And it took a paradigm shift as well because we had to stress the principles, the importance of letting these people get off of your campuses, you know, during this dedicated time. This is protected time and the time they spend there, it'll be invaluable when they return to the campus and they're able to pour into the development of teachers and support. So we're able to see that with this model, we've been able to see incremental gains. And I'll let Ms. Pace speak about elementary.
Yes, and I would just add, just as an example, Barrington Elementary had an allocation for an instructional coach last school year and was not able to fill the vacancy and a third of their third through fifth grade teachers were new to the profession. So it's just a really heavy lift to not have that position staffed. This year, they do have that position staffed and it has just, it's been a huge help in terms of facilitating professional learning communities and providing additional observation and feedback cycles for the novice teachers.
And most of the campuses, well, speaking to secondary, Bedditch, Burnett, Dobie, and Webb both have two instructional coaches and then there are some campuses that have one instructional coach and they're able to offset or supplement in other ways with other strategic staffing to help support instructional coaches. They support new teachers and they support a lot of areas. There are some principals who were strategic and possibly staffed or interviewed for a person who has a background experience in a certain area. Hey, if I notice that I only had 7% of seventh grade students pass math last year, they're going to go to eighth grade with significant gaps. When I interview for instructional coach, I'm going to make sure I have someone with extensive math experience that can help to support in that area while also helping to support in very general areas such as classroom management, new teacher support, things of that. But as a principal and as an admin team, you always want to hire for your blind spots and gaps and our executive directors interview the instructional coaches after the principal submit the names and we make sure that whoever we're hiring is going to support the blind spots and the gaps as well.
So, so tempted to go deep, but I'll try my best to not do. I'm sold, sold, sold on the value of our instructional coaches. Even as our principals are instructional leaders, they also have administrivia, they have all this stuff and the idea of the principal being supported by the instructional coach, the instructional, like all this stuff. So I'm glad to see the investment. Obviously, this is a commentary that has to do with the choices we're going to have to make pretty soon about, we're just going to have to make a lot of choices. And, and what I seem to hear is that instructional coaches matter greatly all over and they matter poignantly on some of our high-needs campuses. They have a lot to do with the retention of teachers so that the first year becomes a second-year teacher. And there's also something to it that I'm really glad to hear about the contextual aspect. This is a campus with lots of newcomers. This is a campus where we need instructional support here or there and, and just a lean-in. So I guess thank you for that. The last thing is just about advisories and understanding, I think it was, you mentioned on at least one of the middle school campuses leaning into advisories as part of the, the plan. And I love a great advisory and I've also seen lots of advisories where not a lot happens and there's not the training or even if there is the training, then materials that are provided are great once around, but at some point, a student is seeing a slide deck the third time or what, you know, like it's, so advisories are so potentially valuable and I ever wonder if they're kind of wasted and how do, if that's true, if I'm reading right, and then how do we mitigate? How do we ensure that advisories really become a poignant and powerful and effective piece of a plan?
Yeah, I think it's all about intentionality, so thank you for bringing that up. For the past two years in secondary, we've been very intentional about executive, executive directors coaching around the effective use of advisory period. There are only so many minutes in the instructional period and even with 90-minute blocks, there's a lot to cover and tackle in very strategic ways. And so advisory is an extension of that intervention period if used strategically. So what we are coaching principals around is to look at the data and allow the data to inform the decisions, allow the data to be able to strategically place students in advisory. Something that gives me heartburn is knowing that a student has struggled in math for the past three to five years, maybe have never passed a math assessment a day in their life and then you pull up their schedule and you see that in advisory, they're not even strategically placed with a teacher that is, could be a core math teacher that could help support in that area. So what we do in the summer is we help coach around looking at the data and then making advisories very strategic. There are some schools that use advisory for instructional periods, for intervention support. There are some that may use it to incorporate behavioral supports and teaching character education lessons. We have Character Strong, which is new this year that a lot of our middle schools have embraced as well, a curriculum that really helps to improve the, to increase the conversations around behavior management support, making wise decisions, things of that nature. So we want to give principals and instructional leaders autonomy and agency, but we also want to coach and provide support on, does the data support the way you're using your advisory in very strategic ways? And as long as the data supports it, then we can help to coach and provide feedback in those areas.
I appreciate that and so if, if you could just, a little bit on the theory of action around, we'll call it what versus how, in terms of, say, advisory, because I just heard something really interesting there and I am curious, as we're working on the improvement plans for specific campuses and really as we're trying to improve all our campuses, the relationship between the what, this, this, we need improvement in this area versus the how, and you just spoke to a pretty broad use of advisories. So am I hearing that in a sense, principals in conversation with central leadership are coming up with a sense of, you know, where our needs are and that they might, in collaboration with their community and up the line, come up with a different use of advisory per campus? And by extension, that theory of action extends even more broadly where each campus has a, there's a particularity built in? I hope I'm being clear. I just, I just want to understand the contours of the what versus how.
Yes. I wouldn't say it's a pretty broad use of advisory. I would say it's campus-specific and the data informs the decisions. So if you walk onto secondary campuses, it will either be for academic support or for behavior support through our character education program. So very specific, two different avenues. There are conversations with the executive director and then we're very intentional when we visit classes on Tuesdays. Last school year, we just visited and saw tier-one instruction. This school year, we are very specific. We tell the principals in advance what we want to see. Right now, all we're doing is observing intervention periods and so we are in advisory classes. In the high schools, we're in our college prep classes. We're in classes to where we typically wouldn't be taken to because we want to make sure that we inspect what we expect and we're able to provide support in those gaps, in those areas of need.
Okay, thank you. And apologies if I took up too much time, but thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you, Trustee Hunter.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, one first to the superintendent and I'm just going to ask that whoever answers it, like that's it, like we get one shot at it, so, because we're, we're rolling into our other meeting. My first question is, and I probably should have sent this in, but I've had things to do. I see the plans and I'm wondering, we always, we talked about data, but I didn't see anything that said, "We've looked at the data at this school for X years and what we have come to find is that it is definitely new teachers, so therefore we need this." I didn't see that in, in the documents anywhere. Did I miss it?
So, no, you didn't. I, I think, so I want to be clear that the documents that are provided are compliance-based. We are developing a thoughtful, detailed plan for each of these schools. It's a five-year plan and, you know, we actually started this process before winter break and the, the approach that we're taking is acknowledging this needs to be a sustained support, not tied to, you know, a, a cycle or something tied to compliance. And so in that plan, which is tied to our middle schools forward initiative, which includes these middle schools plus Barrington for elementary, we do look at all that data. So when you talk about the average years of, of, for each educator across the, across these schools, it's seven and a half years, the most being Bedditch at nine and a half and the fewest years of experience on average being at Dobie at 5.4. So we, we have all of that in our comprehensive plan, but because of the way this is reported and because of the hearing, we, all of that doesn't make its way into, but I want you to know that, like, all of that is actually part of a much more robust plan and I also want to communicate to the board here, you know, I have met with the staff at each of these middle schools and I've also met with the community in each of these middle schools just in the past six weeks, because I, we really want to understand to the point that was made earlier, you know, we have the plans, but I need to be able to use the resources available to me and the authority that I have to clear the road and allocate resources appropriately and, and ensure that it, that it continues to be a priority. So we can provide that, we do have it and we also carry lots of data, data sets to measure inputs and outputs to ultimately track outcomes. So I can provide that and we can maybe even supplement this, but we have all that.
And I think that's important for people to know, otherwise this looks like dart throwing.
Yeah.
Right? So that you guys have done that, so then I'm glad about that and I was, I didn't think that we hadn't done that, because we're talking about money, money that we don't have or money that we may not have long. And so the next thing is, I'm really, you scared me a little bit there because you said we got a five-year plan and on some of these schools, we don't have five years, right? They, they, we are in a precarious position, so I'm, I'm guesstimating that there is an accelerated plan for those schools.
So, so when I say five-year plan, what, what I'm saying is that it's going to cover five years. The goals within each plan, you know, are going to be dependent on the, the needs of the school, like, so yes, there are some, you know, we can talk about kind of each of the different categories and Dobie has, is going to have a more aggressive plan than perhaps others identified, given where they are. And so yes, you're absolutely right, but when we think about initiatives, I want to make sure that we build something that can be sustained and doesn't go away as soon as they exit.
Awesome.
So I just want to make sure that's, that's clear. It's not that we're going to get there in five years, it's that we will have a five-year plan.
Because I'm, and the reason I'm concerned about that is because we talked about that in our previous hearing, is that we set this goal where we start, then we're actually below that goal, we never going to get there. I mean, we're going to, something has to be accelerated, something big has to happen to move that. Because otherwise, we just keep, that's just going to be whack-a-mole, right? We're just going to move left to right, left to right. Schools are just going to be moving back and forth, which buys us time, it doesn't serve our community, it doesn't serve our children at all. And then finally, as we are voting on this, give me one, I just think this is, I'm, the state is not asking for much, but they are penalizing greatly, right? And so when we turn this into them, what happens after that? This is just to say that we're aware of the issue like we weren't before?
Well, you want to speak to that, Dr. Wilson? Yes. So all of the schools that you'll see, or most of the schools that you'll see, they've gone through an ESF, which is Effective Schools Framework Diagnostic, and this is in collaboration with the Texas Education Agency in Region 13. These are one of the data points, very robust document and information that we use to be able to strategically support. So we weren't sitting waiting for the state to release the tip template in December to say that we had work to do. We've been doing that work all school year long, just based on our data points from STAR to MAPGROWTH, to the multiple years that we have with our interim assessments, SEAs, teacher feedback, principal feedback, and then also our ESF diagnostic framework. And so we've, with, along with the executive directors, we have individual plans of support for each of these campuses. Our secondary and elementary academics teams are on these campuses daily. So we, we talk about the instructional coaches and the benefit of them. There's also benefit in our academic coaching specialists who really work to support and to guide and to be a collaborative effort with the instructional coaches and with our campus instructional leadership teams in order to build this work.
Thank you. And then to the superintendent, I would say this, I've been a teacher, I've been an instructional coach, I've done all of that. We cannot put our bag, our, our eggs in the instructional coach basket. I hope we continue to have funds for that, but should we come to a point where we don't, what is Plan B? And so I, I'm not asking you to give me that right now and when we have to say, "School A, B has instructional coaches, but School X and Z really need instructional coaches, so guess what, School A, B." Like those hard choices are coming and I don't know if we're like preparing the waters because it's coming.
So, Trustee Hunter, I would be remiss if I didn't kind of, kind of reintroduce the work that we've been doing over the last year, preparing the entire system to understand how we're going to differentiate support and response to each of our campuses. You've heard us talk about the, the RSI, which is the Resource and Support Index, and we ban schools, not necessarily based on historicals, but based on these of the students. And these schools here are ban-one schools and we have been communicating to our principals and been communicating to our staff that we track key performance indicators, we track everything and we look for as little variance as possible when it comes to kind of implementation, but then when it comes to resource allocation, it's almost the inverse, right? Where you want to demonstrate that, yeah, there are going to be needs in, in these schools and it's okay that we support those needs by allocating resources. An example that comes up all the time is, you know, we, we want to create a welcoming space for families in the front offices and we want to engage with community, but we also know that when you, front office staff is, you know, working with a number of students that are enrolling and unrolling almost constantly throughout the school year, because of the mobility rate, it's really hard to establish that. So you may need to allocate additional resources for front office staff. Another example of that is, you know, whenever we come to hiring, you know, I know we didn't talk about Webb specifically, but we did mention it, you know, Principal Coyle, you know, last year for the first time that he can remember was able to almost be fully staffed before the summer started. And so he was just telling me, and I think he was telling other folks, he's, he's like, "I spent years in, past years, spending the entire summer trying to hire instead of actually planning." And so whenever you can, and the reason we did that, we were very intentional about, you know, how are we going to hire, you know, who has access to the pre-hires, you know, how do you set up the, the, the career fair? I mean, having, being super intentional about all of these things and demonstrating that ban-one schools have additional needs and we're going to provide those resources. And so I think what we're seeing here is just a, a building up of that and that's going to, we prepared the system to respond that way. I know I said a lot there, but just want to...
No, no, yes, thank you so much and can you just let people know who might be watching and who may need a job when the career fair is?
Oh, March 29th, March 29th, everybody. My calendar, my calendar is very, I will be there.
Excellent, thank you. And Trustee Singh?
All right, thanks for this information. I too was also very surprised at how scant the targeted improvement plans are, but I appreciate that each campus still has to do a campus improvement plan, correct? Okay, and we still have like the five-year... And we still have like the five-year um, plan for our Fab Fives. Is it five schools?
We're we're carrying six.
Okay, so there's Fab Six. Okay, the alliteration doesn't work as well, Matthias. Like, we got to fix that. But um, but anyway, um, I wanted to just say, so be real clear that um, starting on page nine, the campus examples selected, it's not random that we selected these campuses. These are the campuses that are really um, the highest focus and the at the greatest risk frankly of um, an eight a potential 1882 if we don't turn things around. Is that correct?
I would say that um, y- yes, but uh, each of them has a different timeline associated with it. Uh, so even within those, there is um, you know, some differentiation between kind of, you know, which ones are even most at risk of of additional intervention up to 1882, correct?
Okay, so what would be really helpful, and I I do appreciate that for each one, we have the earliest exit. But what I don't see is what you kind of just alluded to is like, okay, well, at what point would we get an 1882? I just want to be super transparent parent with, you know, amongst ourselves and with the community because that's let's learn from the mistakes of the past with Mendez. You know, we lost control, local control of that school because, you know, frankly, like the board and the administration was not on top of it. And so I just want to be, you know, make sure that we are really clear and that this is not any indictment of the school campus or the the kids there obviously, or the families or the teachers and principals. It's really more just like, we have got to focus our efforts on the schools um, to make sure that we don't have any more 1882s. And really, so so I don't know like when we can have that more in-depth conversation. But I guess I don't, I just want to just bring that up and and request it formally. And um, and just, I don't know if other trustees are interested in having that conversation. But like I don't have a real clear timeline for each of these campuses, like what, you know, all the things that need to fail for us to get to an 1882 and then make sure that we don't do those things. You know, like we've got to just, you know.
So, um, trustee Singh, what I can do, so I have all that information. Um, I actually brought it here just so I would be able to reference it if I needed to. And we carry it in in kind of narrative form, but what I think would be helpful is almost in tabular form and say for these schools, you know, this is what needs to occur in spring of 2025, like for instance, the target, the turnaround plan uh, for Doby is going to come before the board and then has to, once it's accepted by the board, it has to be then it be then be accepted by the TEA. And then TA could choose not to accept it. And if TA chooses not to accept it, then you come back, you rework it and you submit it again. Uh, you know, there there are lots of if if this, then this, um, but we can map that out. I have all, we have all the information and what we can do is um, supplement the um, presentation is like an additional attachment. And then um, perhaps bring it up at the maybe next information session. I think I'm trying to think when we come back with the turnaround plan, that'd be the information session probably when we at least introduce it. So that would be when we could do it.
That'd be great. And and I don't mind the narrative form in addition to that because I like to read the narrative as well and it helps to interpret. The other thing I wanted to ask about was um, it was good to see the focus, um, at least so that kind of gives a hint as to what we might be seeing in these in these um, more in-depth plans. I was, I did, I couldn't help but notice that there wasn't a whole lot about family um, engagement in here. And I know that like one of the things that we've often talked about is, you know, how well do how much do families actually know how their kids are performing academically? And do they really understand the situat- the precarious situation that their campus is in? And um, you know, just like when you kind of look at the tips, it just says like CAC, like, okay, well, like you might have two or three parents showing up at a CAC. That's not really. So I'm just kind of curious like how we are really in a very grassroots way meeting our parents where they're at.
Yeah, um, so this, one of our, I want to say barriers, but we're kind of like in a holding tank right now with the community knowing like publicly the school ratings because that hasn't been officially released from the state yet. But as far as parents knowing their individual student achievement scores, yes, the campuses are able and have communicated that as well as just the regular progress through MAPGROWTH and other assessments. We have expectations for principals, campuses, teachers to communicate that. So they are able to converse and um, share out like individual student performance data, information of that nature, but not necessarily um, community-wide, like statewide released data until it's released, like with academic scores and standing.
And Dr. Wilson, the only thing I would I would add to that is, you know, when I when I went and met with the families um, from really every one of these campuses except for Barrington, which is going to be coming up at some point here in the future. Uh, you know, we talked about that and that it's it's not just AISD's responsibility to to educate it. It's if it's our, it's the family, it's the community, it's all of us together. And we talked about um, how critically important is that they know where their student is at each point along the way? And that that knowing comes in different forms. You know, we talk about, you know, getting if those who can access, you know, online, you know, the progress reports, which I have a hard time with my kids. That's a whole different thing. Um, you know, that may not be easy for um, different communities. And and there's lots of things going on, you know, a lot of our families are working multiple jobs. Uh, and so we need to make it really easy. And so what we're integrating into our plans is the access points and creating expectations around it. There really aren't um, kind of detailed um, expect expectations at the administration's level regarding like how often this occurs and how it occurs, uh, which is why we're bringing those into the plans now. Um, it's it's my expectation in these plans, it's very clear that for every student, we're going to, you know, engage with them and their family and communicate in this way. One may be through the student teacher conference, but it needs to be another point. And so, uh, then you got to create the tool to measure it, right? Then you have to figure, so, you know, within means. Uh, but yes, that is 100% uh, part and and I would say that was a big focus of the conversations that we had with uh, these four communities specifically.
And every campus that has a tip also has a SIP, so the campus improvement plan. And so you'll be able to see uh, more in-depth family and community engagement strategies in our campus improvement plans as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Kaufman.
So I appreciate the the recognition that these plans were developed um, you know, in a short timeframe. And I would be more concerned if you, you know, if we didn't have bigger more comprehensive plans that have been developed previously, knowing that this is now trying to, you know, identify key components of that that will meet the state and federal requirements. Um, so I'm I'm glad to know that there's deeper, richer, longer-term plans in place beyond just what's on here. Um, and as I read through these, uh, it's, you know, it's clear that there's a lot of things that are taking place on campuses that aren't marked in here. And so when I look at this through a lens of of many of these campuses, having large populations of students who are emergent bilingual and knowing that our district program for that is the, you know, research-based practices for dual language. You know, there's not much in there about dual language, but that again, doesn't bother me because I know that the dual language plans are elsewhere. However, what does always concern me is knowing kind of the history of how we sometimes do interventions in this district and and that is to push aside the multilingual education team to step away from dual language to say, we need to pause that so we can focus on improving outcomes at this school. Instead of saying we need to reinvest in that in order to get better outcomes at this school. So I just, my question, I guess, is really directly to superintendent to go to that is in all this school improvement planning and responding with the CIPs and the TIPs. Uh, what is your checkpoint to and what is your data or what is your what are you, your indicators that multilingual education is genuinely at the table at a decision-making level with um, and in in devising the plans and and developing improvement strategies?
Well, um, trustee Kaufman, I I appreciate the question. I don't want to speak to indicators. I I think what what I'm, what we're attempting to do is to create these initiatives. Um, and in the initiatives, you'll have focus uh, areas. One of the ones in middle school is is the ones around these schools. And then the idea is to take the goals and the constraints and the scorecard, what we learned in the LRP and also take the equity assessment uh, and embed those it so they can find themselves in the initiatives uh, as they roll out for the next five years. And then um, each division together comes together to build it out. And so we have those in draft form. And so as we review them and as we build them out, you know, I'm checking for a lot. I know um, the team here is is kind of looking to see, you know, that we're um, incorporating inputs across all the divisions. Uh, I think I would probably want to come back um, with a specific response as far as a key, an indicator. Um, when you look at kind of the 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 plans moving forward. Because there's there's a couple that we mean, I just I just want to think about that a little bit more. Um, but I think as we move forward in initiatives, you know, perhaps calling out like how how the multilingual um, department and that work or the language work is actually incorporated into each plan. There's a variety of ways that we can do it, but when it comes to indicator, I'm trying to think through like what we would use. Um, I've got an idea, but I I don't know that that'd be maybe the right with right thing to do. Do you want to?
There, there is a component of closing the gaps. It's called the English Language Proficiency Measure. And it's a measure of uh, on the Tellpass test of the percentage of students who achieve a composite score of advanced high or better or make a make a jump from the year before one level from the year before or achieve advanced high. Um, and that's something that as part of our data tracking at the high need schools where we're working with the schools and setting a target of improving that composite score by 50% on Tellpass so that every student is making gains. So that might, you know, lead a little bit into the data analysis of of the programs of the schools.
Yeah, and I will say, over the past two years, we've had a much more inclusive process in terms of data coaching around accountability and the MET team is always invited and included and they always show up to all of them. So, um, yes, they come. We have specific goals for EB students and targets that they're going to meet that are correlated to our accountability metrics. Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. Trustee Foster. It is neutral time. And we have a lot more to get done, but it's neutral time. Yeah.
I'll hold my question. I'll put it in the tracker. I I'm curious to follow up on trustee Kaufman's questions about dual language support and the lean-in. And I guess what I'm going to um, ask somehow in the tracker in some brilliant way, um, has to do with the alignment of our breadth of dual language support being in alignment with supporting our highest needs campuses, if you see where I'm going. So I'll hold that and I'll try to find a nice way to put that in the tracker.
We will be able to provide, we've already been working through that, so we'll be able to get you a timely response.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Really want to thank you. Oh, Ms. Hachimura.
I just wanted to point out, I don't think we called out that with the district coordinators of school improvement is a big part of this work. And these are the two district coordinators of school improvement right here. And I know our principals really appreciate that uh, ability for for Dr. Wilson and Assistant Superintendent Pace to align resources to speak directly to the senior cabinet and the superintendent when roadblocks are are holding them up or they need resources aligned. So they're doing an excellent job with their uh, their roles there and I just wanted to call that out.
That's great. Thank you. I saw that position mentioned, but not the people. So yeah, glad to know who that is. Thank you. And I have just um, a question, a comment. Um, I know that you said there was one elementary school and three secondary campuses that did not achieve progress. Does that mean that they are it will be in a second year? And will now require a turnaround plan that used to happen at year three? Where are we? I mean, what does that mean going, looking ahead?
So we have just one Go Valley that did not make progress last year that we're watching. Do you want?
Eastside is the other school.
So once and all, they'll be on a turnaround plan.
Well, if they, if they don't make growth this year in August, you know, spring test this year and released in August of 25, they're at risk of being in the second year of failing.
So if they don't exit this year or make the progress for potential to exit after a second year of progress?
Right.
Okay, thank you. So I think um, that gets back to trustee Singh's request of really taking a good look at um, our campuses that are putting us at risk of takeover, putting us at risk of 1882 or, you know, a need for some kind of really dramatic intervention and making sure that we have. I know it does not technically count as student outcome um, under our scorecard. And yet it is very much tied to our student outcomes and deeply important. So I would really love to look for a month soon when we have some time and can get an update about that and really have a really strong understanding of what we're doing about that. And and I know board meetings are not the only way we can do that. And maybe there's a a meeting for the community to talk about that because I know when we have an 1882, that's not just an issue or a a threat of intervention. That's not just an issue for that one campus. That is an issue for our entire community. Um, so I think there may be ways to address that, that, you know, maybe bring in people who don't watch the board meetings and and find another um, landing spot for that. And, you know, I know we are about to go out to campuses as trustees to do board-led community engagement, which is one of the requirements of Lone Star Governance. And we will be talking about performance um, on those campuses and and, you know, we will be out in the community in every team, in every vertical team that has a campus that is underperforming according to to TEA standards. And there's a lot of overlap, so. But yeah, I think having a way to really talk about all the campuses that are at risk, not just next year, but the the ones that are at risk of that second year, if they don't make it this year, would be valuable to all of us. And all of us speaking, it's like our whole city. Thank you.
Can can I just clarify? Was it just the one campus? I thought I thought it said on the secondary that three campuses did not achieve progress.
Yes, three campuses did not achieve progress um, out of the nine that were CSI.
And so that was Go Valley and which three secondary?
Eastside, um, GPA Navarro and yes, Doby.
And so then all all of those are in the same position though to president's um, Boswell's question? Okay.
Yes. Yes, um, different timelines and we also are planning for future implications to ensure that the proper supports are provided with the GPA at Navarro and GPA at Travis transitioning. We know that um, this may potentially impact maybe Agarza or maybe, so we're tracking um, these transitions and knowing that one decision for budgetary reasons will potentially and invariably affect and impact other decisions as well. And so that's why we cannot just focus on the schools within the current school year that are identified with the CSI label. We have to focus on all schools because there could be implications with the decisions that we're currently making.
Good. Thank you. Hopeful. We've talked a lot about silos and ripples and, you know, when we pay attention to that and when we don't. So I, there's clearly a lot of really thoughtful, strategic work being done and I thank you all for sharing with us and look forward to learning more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so at this time, we will adjourn our public hearing. Do we want to take a very short break and then come back to the regular meeting? Um, I'm seeing a couple in odds. We can take a very short break and return to the regular meeting. Um, Secretary Gonzalez, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The meeting is adjourned or the hearing is adjourned at 7:24 PM.